Alderman Kierkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukneak.
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Gale?
Here.
Kuzikowski?
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there some kind of alarm?
It's a car.
Oh. Car. Um, everybody, please take a look at the minutes from August 5th. There's no questions, comments, uh, motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of meeting of August 5th, 2018.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kierkowski?
Aye.
Item four is a public hearing to consider a request for an amendment for the time of compliance to an existing conditional use permit, uh, at 9840 South 27th Street. Captain?
Public hearing number one is to consider an amendment to the time of compliance section of the existing conditional use permit, allow a portion of the existing building and lot to be used for a contractor's office, shop, yard, with limited storage on the property at 9840 South 27th Street. Applicant is RD Investigating. Property owner, RD Best Investigating. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is July 24th, 2000.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, this public hearing for, should feel familiar to you. Counsel recall that, uh, an amendment to the existing conditional use permit for this property was approved in July of this year, July 16th. And section eight of that is, features the duration of the conditional use permit. Uh, the original proposal called for a two-year, uh, termination, um, the, uh, the conditional use for that that was being requested. Uh, and with, with the duration, the deliberations of the plan commission in discussion with the applicant, that term actually was extended to three years, unfortunately, and this is an error on our, our part, and I apologize for that. The conditions and restrictions that were presented to you still have the two-year window in there, year termination, the actual, uh, duration that was approved by the plan commission and recommended here for the council was three years. This would correct that, uh, but it is a public hearing. Again, anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the change from two to three years, uh, the duration of the conditional use permit for the property at 9840 South 27th Street, please report support him, give your name and address, proceed to address your questions or comments. The common counsel, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, this is a public hearing. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Third and final call. Now close the public hearing and go on to item five, which is consideration of that ordinance for that time extension. Uh, we'll open it up to the council for questions, comments. I think Doug explained it pretty well. Um, nothing else? Motion, please.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2946 and ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2949 for a contractor's office slash shop slash yard with outdoor storage and truck parking as allowed uses as part of the existing conditional use permit for automobile and truck engine body repair, outdoor storage of vehicles, display of vehicles towards the health and semi-truck trailer parking on the property at 9840 South.
Kierkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kierkowski?
Aye.
Dukneak?
And item six is new business. It's a presentation on the annual tax increment district review presentation, and we have our finance director, Bridget, and our city administrator, Andrew.
I'll take this one, although I don't know about all the transitions in the slideshow here, so we'll take those one at a time.
Those were mine. No, no, those were mine.
We are here, we are here this evening to give the council and the public at large a overview of our annual tax increment districts in the city, both closed out districts as well as active districts in, in Oak Creek. We do this to, oh, as directed by the council, but also as espoused in our strategic plan. We do this to promote a general understanding, transparency, uh, and a financial kind of overview of the status of these districts as tax increment financing is where we invest in this community the most. And there's a lot of, uh, there's, there are a lot of misconceptions that the general public, not just in the city of Oak Creek, but universally have, uh, if you don't work with tax increment financing often. Uh, and a caveat here, as we get into the presentation outline that we completely understand that this may be a level of detail that is a little more, a little too detailed, a little, um, basic for the common counsel, as you're very familiar with this tool. Uh, but with the overview, kind of basic TIF 101, and the understanding of the mechanism, going back to the basics, we also want to demonstrate what, uh, kind of give that education to the public at large, as well as our employees. So we use this, uh, meeting video, uh, and we broadcast that back out to, to different groups. So just please bear with us a little bit. It may, uh, be a little, uh, too basic and at times for the council, uh, in the beginning. Uh, after we get through the basic understanding, we'll get, dive right into the status of our active, uh, tax increment districts here, and then pause for time for questions and answers at the end. Just to remind you, our strategic action plan framework, you look at this every, every meeting, and we live by this here, our vision, mission, values, and our critical success factors. Uh, one of the more important ones that we've talked about a lot is the thoughtful development and prosperous economy, and the inspired aligned and proactive city leadership. All of those critical success, success factors, to be honest with you, come into play when we're talking about using the tool, the TIF tool, uh, one of our very few tools at the local government level in Wisconsin. More directly in the strategic action plan, you have a specific, we have a specific objective to evolve the communication of budget processes, priorities, and fiscal challenges, and I'd say fiscal status and challenges, both internally and externally, again, to the employees, to the public, to the council, et cetera. A few of these items directly relate to TIF, the TIF 101 piece, but we're in, through this presentation, we're also trying to, uh, communicate a, uh, we're, we're also trying to, to check a lot of the transparency boxes that we valued in our strategic plan. Uh, talking about the, uh, budget, again, we have a, an award-winning budget through the GFOA, two years in a row. Uh, this serves as the basic TIF 101 piece, as well as some articles that have been put in by the staff into publications that go out to the public at large. The dollar, uh, dollar bill breakdown of taxes, there will be a slide dedicated to that to show, uh, kind of the last point, to show the, the value proposition that the city has to its taxpayers for its, for its property tax dollar. Very important to us to demonstrate that, uh, whenever we can. So why do we do this thing called economic development, and why do we use this TIF tool? Well, it's for financial stability. We have, at the local government level, as is the case in many states, we have to continue to grow the pie of tax base if we want to keep taxes stable and services high for the residents of the city of Oak Creek. That's, this is the common theme, that's the game we are in, that's the business we are in. And I believe, uh, personally, that if, if you're not growing, you're dying. And I don't mean that you're a bad place to live, but you have fiscal challenges that a growing community may not otherwise have. If you're fully built out, if you're in a rural part of the state, or, or whatever the dynamic is where you have a stagnant, uh, tax base, you struggle every year with levy limits and other state imposed caps, so to speak. You struggle every year with how you're going to provide the same level of service you did the year before. We do this to keep tax rates low, we do this to keep tax base growing, to maintain the quality of life, services, and low tax rate we enjoy in Oak Creek. Speaking of that tax rate, the municipal only tax rate, and we'll get to this a little more, but obviously residents or taxpayers' property tax bill is divvied up between numerous jurisdictions. But for the municipal only tax rate, the cities and villages, in Milwaukee County, Oak Creek is the fourth lowest, and I'd argue probably tied for third with Fox Point if we could go there, because it's, it's, it's really close, uh, really not discernible. Uh, so we're ultimately the fourth lowest for local municipal tax rates. The stuff that we really can control, we are the fourth lowest in all of Milwaukee County. Now, we fare just as well, uh, basically, when we look at all of our tax rates combined, with Milwaukee County, with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District, the city, MMSD, all of the, the King's horses, all of the overlapping jurisdictions. So total tax burden, if you will, is, uh, we, we are, we are third, third lowest, when all jurisdictions, the combined tax rate, as they say, are taken into consideration. Really important, really, uh, you know, we're really proud of that. So as I mentioned, the tax dollar bill breakdown, this is for 2018 payable 2019 taxes, you'll see the city of Oak Creek is roughly 30 cents, just shy of 30 cents of one, our total tax bill. So a third, less than a third, 30% of the tax bill that we write every, a tax check that we write every year is retained by the city of Oak Creek for its operations and financial policies and decisions that we make here. The other 70% goes to those other jurisdictions accordingly. So getting to the basics, uh, just because we use these terms interchangeably, or these acronyms, TIF is the actual financing mechanism or tool, uh, the TIF, T-I-F, and the TID is the actual physical area that, that we're talking about when we speak of TIF. We kind of use these interchangeably, as I just did one split second ago, so really we're talking about the same thing. It's, it's the tool, or it's the district, and we can interchange those. So by the numbers again, um, you know, communities, engaged community members in, in local governments in Wisconsin and elsewhere, uh, are really interested in how their community uses TIF, and whether they rely too much or too heavily, or invest too little or too, too much in tax increment financing, or put that much reliance in it. There's 1,238 active TIDs in the state of Wisconsin, and 107 in Milwaukee County. Every city or village uses this tool, with the exception of Bayside. And I don't think that they're averse, because I worked there for a while, and I know, I know the folks there, uh, I just don't think they have the opportunity, given their community dynamic, mostly a residential built-out community. Um, as of December, as of that same date, 32.5 billion of property value has been in TIDs in Wisconsin, and as I mentioned before, this is the only game in town. We don't have the portfolio of tools available to us that other states do. Uh, local sales tax comes to mind a lot, et cetera. Uh, TIF is the only meaningful tool, and it's a powerful tool for us to utilize to invest in the community. So common misconceptions, uh, creating TIDs will, will increase taxes. The goal of any economic development platform is to, at a minimum, stabilize taxes. Uh, number two, that there are developers get rich quick scheme, or three, that developers don't pay their taxes, and the city gives out free money. It is absolutely true that the city invests in a range of project costs for any given project, and that includes cash incentives for new development. Uh, it also includes project costs such as infrastructure, stormwater, massive site grading costs, uh, those types of things. I think IKEA is a great example of a, of a hybrid of that. The IKEA Development Agreement and the TIF tool used there, first built out the required roadway, South IKEA Way, for the development, and then in the end, based on the taxes generated by the IKEA, not the city of Oak Creek taxpayers at large, not you and I, uh, there's, there's a cash, uh, kind of a return of that incentive, or that increment revenue that, that they give the, the city through the TIF. Uh, general taxpayers, one more point on that, um, this, we have a uniformity of taxes in, in the state of Wisconsin. Everybody has to pay their taxes. So when there's talk in the paper about, you know, incentives given, uh, those developers, including multifamily developers, have to pay their property taxes. And they're taxed at the rate that everybody else is. So there's this kind of argument in some places where, well, they're not paying taxes for a period of time, and they're not paying their fair share. We don't want to engage in that, and we're also prohibited by law to, to just abate taxes. Other states do that, they allow abatement zones. Um, general taxpayers are negatively impacted financially by a TID. I think there's a school of thought out there that, that, that is the case. Ultimately, the goal of investment in our community is to grow tax base, so we can stabilize and decrease taxes over time for our residents. Certainly, there are service constraints within tax increment districts, uh, as that monies, as we'll, we'll see through the mechanism, uh, as those monies are kind of locked away in a, in a special district, a TID. Uh, but generally speaking, a positive impact, and in the, in the time that increment is growing in the district, the city is still able to utilize the net new construction from those districts to make, uh, certain decisions on an annual basis in their budget. Net new construction, uh, eases the levy limit, so to speak, in the state of Wisconsin. So really basic understanding of the, of the TIF mechanism. You start off with a base value, you define an area, and you add up all of the property value that's in that bounded area. You go through a lengthy public process with all those jurisdictions. The underlying base value, or I should say the tax revenue derived from that base value, continues to go to the, all of the jurisdictions, including the city of Oak Creek. Now, the, the presence of the TID then allows for the increment value, or the value above the base year that's created through that investment, to go to the TID to repay TID project costs over a period of time. That's typically 20 years, there's other statutory provisions, and we have a few districts that would allow up to a 27-year district for blight elimination. By and large, we rely on the 20-year variety in the mixed-use TIDs. So just as an example, and then we'll get back to that dollar bill graphic again to really drive this home. If there's a $15 million property, the full tax revenue from that is 316,800. If this were not in a tax increment district, the city's portion of that for its operations and finances would be 94,500. Again, just giving up that dollar bill that we were talking about earlier. If the city in a TID, that, if a city creates the TID and the $15 million is generated in a, in a tax increment district, the city via the TID keeps the full tax rate, so all 100% of the dollar bill. And if you see the difference there, that's a difference of between the 316,8, which we, the TID would receive versus the 94,5 that only the city would receive if it weren't in a TID. When the TID terminates, all of the taxing jurisdictions get the tax, additional taxes that they didn't have to invest to create. But the mechanism is that they really did invest, but it was more of a foregoing of those additional dollars for a period of time. So that's the, that's the skin in the game for the Milwaukee County, the, uh, the Technical College and the School District. They forego revenues for a period of time to allow the city to implement the, the district. Again, just driving the point home, typically no TID, we would keep a, you know, 30% of the tax bill for our operations, in a TID you keep 100% of the tax dollar to repay the cost in the TID. And again, this is a pretty, uh, pretty common graph that you see, uh, explaining the mechanism that is the TIF. As the property values grow in the TID, the TID project costs are paid off, and then the TID terminates or closes, and all of the jurisdictions on the right-hand side benefit from an overall higher tax base that importantly would otherwise not be there but for the city creating the TID and investing in the TID. So we have a really good history of, of early TIF closure in the city of Oak Creek. We have closed six tax increment districts, you see on the left-hand side there. The average life, each of those, it looks to be a 20-year district, the average life was just over 11 years. Uh, and the value generated from those, on the right-hand side, if you add all that up, it's $130 million in new tax base for the city of Oak Creek, and the overlapping jurisdictions as well. The TID numbers run consecutively, so it looks a little weird, because you have, we've closed out one through five, and then there's nine, they run consecutively, so you always keep adding in the end. So the next one, if we were to do one, would be 17, and so on. Um, I, I crunched the numbers as we get into the existing tax increment districts and the value generated in those. Uh, that's about $370 million, and they're not done growing in tax base yet. If you combine the values of the districts that we have closed out and the values in the active TID districts, that's a half of a billion dollars of tax base for the city of Oak Creek in the overlapping jurisdictions. That's, you know, when your overall value is 3.6, 3.7 billion, you can see where those investments are paying off in tax-based generation. Really important slide. I don't think it's, yeah, onto anybody to acknowledge that the city of Oak Creek, as is the case in any high-growth community, has invested a lot of dollars in itself. We've invested heavily, and our geo-debt has grown substantially over the last, probably seven to 12 years, somewhere in that timeframe. The most important slide tonight, in my opinion, is this slide, and that is demonstrating to the taxpayers that, of all of our general obligation debt, with the exception of the, of the WE Energies dollars, which is the WEPCO, the large yellow portion of the pie, all of the balance of the geo-debt of the city of Oak Creek, with the exception of 1%, is being paid for successfully by the tax increment districts. The 1% represents the burden under the property tax levy that we put onto the general taxpayers of the city, and that doesn't have anything to do with TIDs. Really important slide, I know, uh, community investment is a big question in the community, how much, how little, too fast, too slow. This, this is a very telling slide about what the impacts of that, and that the, the districts are paying off these investments, and you'll see that in the individual slides. Just a summary, uh, we have 10 open districts, six through 16, with the exception of nine, close that one, and that just gives you a general overview of where those are. So then we'll go through, not in any great detail, because I don't want to bore you too much, but we will go through each of the active TIF districts and kind of give a status update of, of where they're at. You see the types of information on, on this slide, you'll see those in all of the subsequent slides. When we created it, when, when can it, when should it have to be, when will it have to be terminated statutorily, typically 20 years? The type, uh, the total increment and developable acres in the beginning, and how much is remaining, and then the balance of geo-debt. You also see here, my cursor lines up, it does, whether we have any active or pending, uh, development agreements in the district that were, you know, paying off. You can see this is TID 6, Creekside Corporate, generally speaking, 13th, just south of 13th and, and Ryan Road along the interstate. Commonly recalled, commonly, we call it Creekside Corporate Park. You can see that, uh, there's about $14.8 million of increment generated there, and there's no active or pending development agreements in that district. TID 7 is, I believe, our largest in square, uh, in acreage. It's a, a long district spanning 27th, like, 27th Street, as you see there. There's about 302 remaining acres there, that, very unlikely that, that it's all developable. Uh, we expect closeout of this district statutorily in 2027. There are two active Pago developments for Campeone and Liberty Trust, uh, two, uh, two active Pagos that we're paying off on an annual basis. I want to put a plug in to TID 7, because TID 7 is a focal point, a focal strategy for a few things that we have done and looked at in this community in terms of long-range financial planning. TID 7 was created in 2007. TID 7 would, it would have been really nice for TID 7 to support the debts associated with the investment made in the Drexel Avenue corridor and the Drexel Avenue interchange. Due to this being a victim, you can see the downturn there, uh, on the bar graph in 11, 12, and 13, that, those costs, significant costs which we are levying for, were not able to be paid off by TID 7. That was a choice we made. We knew that going in, I wasn't here in 2011, 2012, but certainly that everybody knew the numbers at that time, and, and of course you make the investment in the Drexel Avenue interchange. But moving forward, as we're talking about, if you recall last summer, the CIP funding analysis, how do we generate monies with levy limits and such with, uh, for roads and bridges and equipment? And how do we also look at, uh, you know, LED conversion of our streetlights, or, uh, street lighting, you know, grid upgrades, underlying infrastructure there that you don't see? TID 7 is a central strategy to that. We'll, we'll be talking about that in a little more detail, we have a little bit of a plan, because the main story is, TID 7 is growing in value such that it can now support, or at least in a year or two, can support, begin to support the costs associated with the Drexel Avenue project and Drexel Avenue interchange. More to come on that. TID 8 is Oakview Business Park. You see significant growth in the last five years in Oakview. Uh, termination date expected in 2029. I don't believe that that's, uh, that it's probable that we close that one out early, given the way that the infrastructure and the debt associated with that was structured, but, um, if increment continues to grow, we can always take a look at those things. That's our goal, is to close districts out as soon as we can, but certainly the, uh, more recent tax increment districts, Drexel Town Square, Ryan Business Park, they, those are longer-term investments. So the, the districts may happen to stay open as much as, as long as their statutory life. However, the, the, the increment that's being generated in there is substantially more than some of the districts we've closed early. You saw about 78 million in increment as of 1-1 of this year in Oakview. TID number 10 is the Master Lock, uh, commonly known as the Master Lock. Uh, one Pago development agreement in the district for Master Lock itself. TID number 11, Drexel Town Square, as of 1-1 of 19, almost $140 million of new increment in Drexel Town Square. Very much success in terms of new, uh, tax base being generated. And I should say that when I gave you the number of a half of a billion dollars of new increment being generated in the closed and the active TIDs, that's only one metric. That doesn't account for the jobs that are created, the cool stuff happening in this community, the commercial outlets that were never here, and just the overall quality of life in Oak Creek and the things we get to do, community events, gatherings, and those types of things. So we talked myopically in terms of tax base, but there's just a lot more to it than, a lot, uh, many more goals attached to that, and metrics attached to that than just tax base. TID 12 is the IKEA summary. There's one active Pago in the district for the IKEA. I kind of laid out how that, uh, development agreement works a little bit earlier. We have just concluded amending TID 12 to include the parcels that you see along Drexel Avenue to the south there, as well as some parcels to the east, but that, uh, wasn't, isn't certified yet by the state, so that will show up next year when we do this. TID number 13 is the Lakefront. Um, I should have mentioned this in TID, when we were going over TID 6. We actually have a statutory provision in Wisconsin that allows for a, uh, one TID to donate to a, another TID, uh, given certain statutory requirements and restrictions on that, and to jumpstart the lakefront activity and to handle some of the environmental issues that are known out at the lakefront, among other, among other goals. The TID number 6 is presently a donor TID to TID 13, and you can see, uh, that was one of our more recent districts created in 17, so there's not much growth yet to speak of in the lake. We'll change that soon. TID number 14, one of our smaller districts, is the Sixth and Rossin Project. You'll see that there is a spec building, spec industrial building going up now, the walls are about up, um, on that development, and there's one active development agreement, which is a combination of upfront grant for some environmental remediation costs, as well as a Pago. There's one outstanding district, or one outstanding development, one outstanding development agreement. I don't think that there's any other developable property outside of that, uh, property that's, or building that's being constructed right now. TID 15 is Drexel and Sixth Street, or commonly referred to as the Aldi, uh, district. Again, a very small district, created last year, and one active Pago in the district to support the remediation. If you recall, we had some metal storage buildings, some, some wet land, land issues, and some other gunky stuff to take care of to make that redevelopable and really, you know, help that doorstep that, that it is to Drexel Town Square. Uh, number 16 is the Ryan Business Park, or commonly referred to as the Amazon, being the one large, uh, user that comprises the majority of the district, created last year. Increment as of 1-1 of 19 was about 9.8 million. Obviously, tens of more millions of dollars of value to go once the Amazon is fully, fully developed and assessed, and there's a remaining 35 acres or so in the district to complete that business park. And right now, Amazon is the only, is the only, uh, development agreement in the district, and that's a 100% Pago. Uh, there is a small upfront portion for the remainder of the Ryan Business Park as well, but that, that has not much to do with the Amazon deal itself. So that concludes the brief, some might say, some others may not, presentation on our tax increment districts, active and closed, and we'd be happy to, to answer any, answer any questions. I would say I've been in the city of Oak Creek now for about three years. I would say I've been in the city of Oak Creek now for about three years. And hopefully this is, doesn't sound too self-serving, but historically, the leadership in this community has done really well with administering and, and, you know, being safe and having those taxpayers safeguards in those tax increment districts and their associated development agreements. And of course, we're going to continue that because that's the only way to do it responsibly. Uh, and, you know, we take that seriously as a staff, and I know the council feels the same way. So we're incredibly judicious, and this is just a way to demonstrate to the public that, you know, we're, we want to be, we will continue to be transparent with how these investments are being made in our TIDS.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, open it up. Questions, comments from the council? Um, Rich, nothing? Anybody? Uh, go ahead, Mike.
Alderman, Mike, Tomlin, Fort District. Uh, good job, uh, Andrew, on the presentation. It's, it's very helpful. Even though it's basic, I like it at that level. On TIF, on TID 14, it's, uh, mainly a spec building, you said, right? On our Sixth and Rossin?
Yes.
Uh, where are we at on, do we have any tenants?
Not that I'm aware of. We haven't, I haven't heard anything either.
Right? Interested things.
Chris?
Alderman, Guskowski, Sixth District. I just want to thank you guys. There's so much information here that, you know, you can break it down for the guys that don't understand this as much as, or people that don't look at this every day. So there's so many slides in here that, you know, can be used and, and sent out to people when they're asking questions. And I really like the fact, when we look at, you know, as a strategy, um, how we're viewing the TIDS and TIS as it being a, a tool and, and necessary when we need it. So I, I like our approach on that, so thank you.
And anything?
Just, just two comments. I, I think that one statistic that's not, not in there, which might be useful in out years, is that the, the state of Wisconsin, I mean, you may, might hear again, one of the misconceptions that Andrew alluded to, is that, oh my gosh, we've got so many TIFs. I mean, uh, that we, we got too many TIFs in Oak Creek. Well, the state's kind of sets a me- metric for that, and I think it's 12% of your equalized value. And while I don't have the exact figure, and I, I should have that memorized, but I think it's, we're somewhere around.
Seven or eight percent.
Right. So we, so we are, although we've got a lot of value in our TIF districts, and that's a good thing, I mean, that number's going up, but we're still well within, and, and very good, sound fiscal shape with respect to our percentage of equalized value. Second point I'd like to make is that the state also allows that when you close a district, and you can see, we have a few that are, you know, kind of getting close, uh, should the, the city, uh, wish to, you can extend the life of that district by one year, uh, to provide for affordable housing in some way, shape, or form. And that's not, you know, it's not prescriptive in terms of what that is, but just thought as you, uh, as we, uh, address those issues more and more, and those will be addressed in terms of our comprehensive plan, and, you know, workforce housing, affordable housing is going to be a, a big thing. It's already a big thing with respect to how it drives the economy of, of regions. Uh, that is a tool, an additional tool that's available to you, should you avail yourself of that.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Um, again, I want to thank the staff for putting it together, um, all the same. This is really important for the public. When you're out there in the public, everybody complains about taxes. And my one line to them, and it's saying a popular thing for a politician to say, but everybody pays taxes. There is no free ride on this deal. Andrew, you made that point. Um, this is the one tool we have. It's been done very responsibly. I'd like to thank members of this council and past councils for passing vote and being the watchdogs on these things, because this really has enabled us to keep the services where they're at. And the general public expects those services, just like every morning you get up and expect the sun to rise. They expect our garbage picked up, our parks mowed, our police and fire to be there when they need them. This is what's enabling us to keep those services. It's very tricky once you're out there balancing it, and it's even trickier for our staff to do it. So, uh, keep that in mind. I hear it all the time when we're out in public, but again, the general public expects these things. These are the things that are happening, and as Andrew said, we're very fortunate that we're in growth mode. And we have to leverage that opportunity when the opportunity's there, because we won't be there forever, and we'll be a different city in years to come. But we're setting the platform for the next 15 to 30 years for us to be a very strong, vibrant player on the South Shore. So I want to thank all you guys for all your hard work doing this, because there is a lot to understand, and Doug made some points, some very valid points. The state restricts us on just how much we can TIF, and, uh, believe it or not, we're not there, uh, because we have done this responsibly. And just, you guys will just comment on this, a little bit on that donor TIF. There's a lot of talk that we could have closed out, was it six or seven? Could have closed it out early. And then that dollar bill, again, if you go back to the dollar bill, how much it would have affected the average person's property tax versus leveraging that money to jumpstart the lake? And if you could kind of get on that by using that money as a donor TIF.
Absolutely. Without having the specifics, and I know that Andrew may have that in his, in his mind, but, uh, it, it is, you're exactly right, Mayor. It's all about leveraging the investments that have already been made, and, and by, again, using the donor TID relationship, I mean, you can capture essentially 100% of that increment, whereas if you look at the dollar bill, uh, you know, you could only capture about 30% over that five-year period. So it's an effective way. Uh, it doesn't work in all circumstances, yet be frugal and judicious in its use, but in the case where we have our lakefront TID, which we know we had some upfront costs, then, and it's a blighted TID, we needed a little jumpstart, we needed a little extra, you know, infusion of capital, it was a perfect way to fiscally, in a fis- fiscally responsible manner, to get that, those infrastructure, those costs in place without taking out any GEO debt on the TID 14 as of yet.
Great. Thank you. Andrew?
It's a little tricky to give you an answer, because there's a requirement that when you close a TIF, that you, you do, you do, I mean, they force you to provide property tax relief, uh, via the levy. I know Bridget can probably speak to this a little more, but just to generally answer your question, Mayor, the increment in that district, that's as of this year, so it probably could have been a little less, and when we actually made that decision, is, you know, less than $15 million. Sounds like a lot of money, but when you have a property tax base of, you know, 3.6, 3.7 billion dollars, you, I mean, you're, you're talking a de minimis amount for a general household of relief.
Correct. And, and I know when we did that, that, you guys did have the numbers, and that really was the explanation to the public, that you will get far more bang for your buck by taking that money and leveraging it over time on the lake, as Doug said, for the infrastructure of the bridge.
Well, and as, as the creation of our TIF districts, the closure of the TIF districts, the amendment of the TIF districts, creating the donor-donor relationship had to be approved by the Joint Review Board as well. And the members of the Joint Review Board include people from the city, the county, M A T C, and the school district. So those taxing entities had to continue to say, we see the value in taking the $400,000 tax revenue from TID 6 and transferring it to the lakefront for the max amount of five years. That's what the state allows. When you go through that donor-donor relationship, you have to show that A, one TIF is solvent, and B, that the other TIF is in need of assistance. And being the fact that the lakefront district had so many environmental things that we were looking at, and didn't have any immediate movement on the commercial front to create increment, we wanted to bring the residents back down to the lakefront and give them some access. And the taxing entities also felt that was valid. And so that's where really the, the backing came, was they voted on that as well.
Thank you for that. Andrew, any last words before we move on? Anybody else have any questions? Again, thank you. Very well done. Very well done. Okay, we will move on to item 7, uh, consideration of a resolution authorizing the services of Baker, Tilly, Vicegro, and Kraus as the city's auditing firm. Bridget?
So the 2018 calendar year was the last year in a three-year contract with our auditing firm. We have the option to go out to bid and do a complete RFP, which is very time-consuming, but something that we could do if the council so chooses. In the past six years that I've been here, we have gone back to Baker, Tilly at the end of the contract and asked them to provide us with a longer-term contract. Having continuity with your auditors, with the number of TIF districts that we just saw, the number of debt issuances that we have gone through, and quite honestly, just turnover among our staff, having consistency with that auditing firm is, um, it, it assists all the way through the year, because we reach out to them when we have any questions, or when we're creating a new TIF district, or an amendment, or, you know, new debt service, we are sending them paperwork throughout the year, which makes their fieldwork time much easier. Um, you know, again, we've had some turnover in the finance department staff, so creating that continuity would be great for, for me personally. Um, but just having all the files and working with people that have been with the city of Oak Creek for a number of years makes it a great working relationship. So I reached out to Baker, Tilly, and asked them to provide a contract. They came back with a five-year contract versus a three-year contract. So if the council does not want to look at a five-year, we could go back to Baker, Tilly, and ask them for a three-year. But the five-year that they presented has an increase of 3% over our 2018 fee. So 2019 and 2020 hold steady at that 3% increase, and then 21 and 22 go up another 3%. And then, um, 2023 is another 3%. So holding, you know, two years steady at a time, which makes it an easier budgeting scenario for me. Um, but overall, very happy with their services. I hope to have them out here next month to give you their final audit report for 2018. Um, and I'm open if you have any questions.
Questions for Bridget?
Mayor, just a comment, Alderman, Kirkowski, First District. I think five years are fine, and I think the 3% increases are modest, considering everything else in this world. Thanks.
Yes. Um, and really, you would typically see in a three-year contract, you would see an increase each year. So the fact that there, you know, if you look at that 3%, that's really, you could look at it at one and a half and one and a half, where they could be moving each year. Um, the amount of work and regulations from the government accounting standards boards continues to increase with the new ways of fraud and things that are happening. You want them to continue to, the auditing firm, to expand what they're looking at. They're doing that by starting to delve into the IT world a little bit in their audit as well, um, deeper than they have in the past years. So as their services expand to cover more of what government is looking at, I would also expect their fees to be adjusting.
Else, Ken?
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Bridget, uh, realistically, how many firms are capable of providing?
I would say you probably have five that would end up responding of, you know, for a community our size and the activity of our size, um, there are maybe two that have the local Wisconsin offices. We would be branching into the Illinois area or the Illinois market.
Um, and just keep in mind, Bridget mentioned, it could go out to an RFP. That 3% would be built into that RFP bid. They're anticipating their cost going. Uh, it's not like you're gonna see that go away.
And just to solidify the 3%, we're talking $1,290 increase in a $1,330. So not to try and be aloof by just putting that percentage out there. Um, in the grand scheme of things, it's a $45,000 audit contract on a, you know, 25-plus million-dollar budget.
No further questions? Uh, motion on 7, please.
Okay, we'll move to approve resolution 12088, that's 08201, on authorizing the services of Baker, Tilly, Virtual Krausney, as the city's auditing firm for the fiscal years ending in December 31st, 2019 through September 31st, 2021.
Guskowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Duknia?
Aye.
Tomlin?
Aye.
Item 8 is engineering and its consideration of an ordinance to repeal and recreate various sections of the code relating to design criteria, standard specifications, uh, for storm, relating to stormwater discharge quality, uh, and exemptions to recreate, uh, stormwater management plans and maintenance agreements going forward. You'll get it in the reading, but with us, we have Mike to start this all out.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for, uh, well, you didn't read through all that.
No.
That was, I'm sure everybody appreciates that. That was very wordy, so, um, we got Phil to thank for this. So, uh, just to introductory note, this item and then the, the three remaining, the following items on engineering, all relate to, um, stormwater. Uh, these are items that, uh, we've been, uh, have been in the works, and, uh, we, uh, really found some time to, to kind of tie these, uh, all, uh, all these loose ends up. So, um, basically, they, they deal with stormwater management and water quality, you know, as, as we work with our, our partners at MMSD, uh, and the DNR, EPA, uh, on mutual goals for, uh, water management and, uh, green water state. So basically, uh, item 8 is, uh, uh, revision to the stormwater ordinance, and, uh, the major item is to bring our stormwater ordinance, uh, in compliance with, uh, new MMSD, uh, standards on their, uh, stormwater chapter, and that being the, a requirement, a new requirement for green infrastructure incorporated into developments that, um, bring, uh, a new impervious surface, uh, between 5,000 square feet and 21,780, which is a half acre. So basically, from a tenth of an acre to, um, uh, a tenth of an acre to a half acre. Previous, in the ordinance, it was half acre or more. So the, uh, stormwater requirements are getting, um, a bit more stringent, and, um, we are required to be in compliance with, uh, MMSD, either in compliance or more strict. So, uh, this brings us into compliance with their, their new changes.
Ken?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, Mike, I was looking through these, and then, you know, they didn't like stick out to me. Wondering, is there anything onerous or anything that I missed that would be unusual mandate that they're increasing costs to us or developers with this? That I didn't catch?
It, it, it will be a cost, uh, to, uh, developers, even developers of, of small developments. Basically, 5,000 square feet would be, uh, maybe a two-lot CSM.
Do they have to submit a stormwater plan with that?
They, they would have to, uh, get a green infrastructure permit. And so they would have to incorporate, um, either permeable pavers, you know, on a very small development, like I just described. I mean, it's going to be something like a rain garden or, or bio infiltration swale. Um, even certain plantings would, would qualify, so, but what they need to do then is they need to get a permit, and that is the next item that we will be discussing, and a plan that will be reviewed by our stormwater staff and, uh, an agreement entered into. So we will need to issue that permit, review the work, and sign off on it that it is completed.
Relatively speaking, percentage of projects that currently go through this first, what?
So say a developer comes in and they want to do a 50-lot subdivision. I mean, this will not apply to them. They are going to do what, what, uh, has been done, uh, over the last two decades in, in our community, which is, uh, larger-scale stormwater development, uh, if you have a larger retention pond. Um, and, you know, they can always, they can always incorporate green infrastructure and reduce the size of their pond. Um, I think more than likely, that wouldn't be the case. But for smaller developments where, you know, it's just not viable, if someone has to give up so much property because they're putting it in a, a retention pond, um, you know, rain garden in, in the corner of a property that, that collects the runoff, is, um, is, is a, you know, I, I think a fair way to go.
Wait, we, we have the staffing that see this as a noxious amount of time spent doing this for future projects?
We, we don't, um, see this as, as, uh, having to be a, 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 a big addition to the workload. Um, again, and we, we're gonna have a permit. There is going to be a fee to that permit, which will cover, um, which we think will cover staff, staff time spent on it. staff, staff time spent on it.
Anyone else?
Again, as Mike kind of mentioned, it's, it's really about managing upfront, stormwater, and stormwater is becoming more and more of an issue. We see our storms getting larger at times, and seasons are a little different than what they used to be. So again, I think this is being very proactive, lot more, staffs appreciate it. And again, you know, very different time here development, new techniques.
Motion on eight.
We'll move to approve ordinance 2945, repeal and recreate section 13.103 relating to definitions, repeal and recreate section 13.104A relating to lookability repeal, oh, repeal and recreate section 13.105C and 13.105D relating to design criteria, specification, repeal and recreate section 13.106C1 and 13.106C2 and recreate section 13.106C3 relating to stormwater discharge quantity, repeal and recreate section 13.106F3 relating to exemptions, repeal and recreate section relating to stormwater management plans, and repeal and recreate section 13.109A relating to maintenance agreements.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Dukenia?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of the resolution establishing green infrastructure permit that we spoke about briefly.
And so we did a review of what we thought the effort would be by staff to administer the permit, and this, of course, then is coordination with the developer review, including site review to confirm the construction mapping. We, we expect we would have a GIS layer that would, would show the improvements, and then I've got the post-construction inspection in here. So basically, the, the effort, we've got a permit fee of $250. Figure that covers about four and a half hours of one staff member.
Questions for Mike? Seeing none, motion?
We'll move to approve resolution 12089-082019, establishing agreed infrastructure permit application fee.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Dukenia?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Ten is consideration of a motion to approve the revision to the stormwater management engineering design manual. Mike?
The stormwater section of the, of the design manual has long been on our, our list of items we needed to address, and we have done that. And last revision, I think we've got it listed here, 2007. And Mayor, you hit, hit the nail on the head with the, the comment earlier that we, we are seeing different intensity storms. The seasons seem to be shifting, but, so, you know, with that, we need to, you know, review the, the designs. And this, this outlines what, what's the intensity of the storms, what duration of the storms, the rainfall depths, and how that gets incorporated into, into the design of stormwater management. We also added the green infrastructure requirements that, that we spoke about on a previous item. And basically, then it was a cleanup of language. I mean, the language has changed significantly. Our technical standards are now in accordance with the DNR technical standards. Before, we had those all listed out, it was a very cumbersome document. And we added some language to get us consistent with a 2016 ordinance revision related to infiltration of runoff. I guess lastly, then, we've got a table that talks about the maintenance requirements for what had previously, previously just been, you know, wet detention ponds. Now we've got the various green infrastructure items such as rain gardens, bio retention, permeable payments. That's all in there, spelled out on how that needs to be maintained. With that, that makes it easier for developers who have their, their engineers designing these elements and will make the review process more efficient, we think.
Great, thank you. Questions for Mike on the manual? None, motion?
And then?
Uh, ten.
Gale, we'll move to approve revision to chapter four, stormwater management of the engineering design manual.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Item 11 is consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing and executing an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District, or MMSD, and the city of Oak Creek. Mike?
So what, what has been happening in the, in the stormwater industry over the past several years is a review of standards for sediment and pollution control in streams, and they're going to, towards, moving towards a system referred to as total maximum daily loads, TMDL for short. These are EPA-approved allowable pollutant loads developed for impaired waterways. And there are TMDLs established for the Milwaukee River. And relatable to Oak Creek is that the Oak Creek itself is, they are in the early development stage of TMDLs because it is recognized as an impaired waterway. That has to do with sediment erosion along the banks, chlorides, phosphorus, and so there is ongoing testing as they, as they monitor that. So basically, staff feels that with this request from MMSD of really all of their member communities to partner in getting into this agreement, partnering to come in compliance with the upcoming TMDL requirements, that now would be a, a good time for Oak Creek to sign onto this agreement. We are aware of a couple other communities that already have. Again, these, these requirements are in the works, and it is an important issue. It is not a burning issue, but, you know, we are, we're in support of this, and we recommend that, that the council consider signing this.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike about the agreement? Ken?
Mike, philosophically, or any, any impact you see on how we're gonna have to take this, these things into account in terms of developmental plans and how we think about those things moving forward?
This is related to, to the waterways, and, and basically, when the, when the requirements come down, you know, there, there will be, that, that, that ongoing testing will show if there's progress being made, and, and if the standards are not being met, then, then there's gonna be repercussions, you know, as far as, as our stormwater permit. So this agreement basically outlines that because we are a paying member into MMSD, if MMSD does a project, for instance, that is one in the, in the Oak Creek, in the city limits, or upstream of the, even upstream of the city limits, then we get credit, or we get some portion of credit for that, for satisfying these TMDL standards. So there is no additional cost to the city by entering into this agreement because the city is already a paying, paying into MMSD. And the city can decide at any time to pull out of this agreement, but we don't really see an advantage in that because then we just lose any credit for an MMSD project that would take place. We will still be beholden to the TMDL standards. But again, it's not clear to us exactly when that is gonna apply to Oak Creek.
So we, as a city, as a developer, have to consider considering themselves?
Um, you, you know...
Or we have to take into account when we approve a stormwater plan?
They, they are currently, basically, you know, we have tight erosion control standards. Development that develops tributary to the Oak Creek, the Rhine Business Park, for instance. They are lining both sides of that. So we, we monitor the erosion control very tightly there. So sediment into that creek. We are also taking initiative to request CIP funds to build a fund for a stream bank restoration project, and you'll see that in the upcoming budget request. So this is, you know, primarily an engineering item to maintain and, and, you know, try and see some progress.
Okay, anyone else? Nothing else, motion, please.
We'll move to approve resolution 12090-082019, approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District and the city of Oak Creek to recognize joint TMDL implementation.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman?
Aye.
Gale? Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Dukenia?
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of resolution 2947, adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 8100, 8146 South 27th Street, 8100 South Orchard Way. Doug?
Yes, thank you. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for the properties that the mayor just mentioned. These properties are currently shown as single-family residential on our future land use map, which was adopted as part of the 2002 comprehensive plan, which is currently in the process of being reconfigured and redone. The proposal would be to go to a mixed residential in, in order to set the stage for a future residential development of these properties. It should be really clearly known, and it was stated during a lot of the correspondence with the applicant and the discussion by the plan commission, that the approval or consideration of a mixed residential designation for land use is in no way an endorsement of any concept plan that may have been presented as part of that process. Developer understands that, but it's, it's important to note that there has been some discussion regarding some of the concepts that have been put forward and how those concepts may need to be altered as they proceed through the entitlement process, which would include rezoning, land divisions, vacations of right-of-way, possibly a planning and development designation. So kind of the summary is, there's a lot, long way to go for any development there. This is just the first stage in doing that. And mixed residential really is, for the most part, an appropriate land use in the area. I do give a history of that parcel and for the council, I won't go into that unless you have questions about that, but it's, it's the remnant of the Colonial Woods parcel, which was a multifamily, it's condominiums. Parcel was subject to earlier planning and the 27th Street plans, and that really informs how we're approaching any potential entitlement process for this, and letting those kind of plans guide us in terms of the geography of any rezoning request or the aesthetic or design standards or densities to be followed as this project moves forward, moves forward. So staff was generally supportive of that mixed residential designation, as was the plan commission. The only change I would add is that in deference to the, the subarea plan that was adopted for 27th Street, it did show a significant portion of the 27th Street frontage as kind of a planned business designation. At the plan commission meeting, the discussion centered around, well, yeah, it does make sense that, you know, portions that especially get, as you get further north towards Drexel Avenue in that corner, as that gets redeveloped, it may be appropriate for some planned business. And the discussion at that point kind of centered around, well, how much, you know? So we kind of thought about it in terms of what made, what made sense, and the plan commission finally settled about 300 feet. So the westerly 300 feet as proposed, and in the resolution that was approved by the plan commission, allows for a mixed residential on the, the bulk of the property with the westerly 300 feet going into a planned business category. That, in, in a nutshell, that's the request. You may recall that this was the subject of a, a second round before the plan commission, just given some procedural things that needed to happen there, but when you boil it all down, I think mixed residential does make sense for this property, as does a portion of it as a planned business. But again, as we move forward through the entitlement process, the plan commission will get a shot at, and the council will get a shot at the rezoning with respect to the things that really are more impactful, like density, design, roadway standards, roadway layouts, things of that nature.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug? Steve?
Alderman Kerkowski, first district. Just for purposes of the ordinance, I believe this is in the second district, not the first as it's printed, for what it's worth.
Oh, you are correct. Nothing else? Anybody else? Ken?
I'm sorry, just, I didn't get a chance to watch the, the 300-foot kind of boundary, that, basically 100 yards. That number came from...
It's a relatable, being the start of football season, it's kind of a very relatable number. I think everyone kind of gets, oh, that's the, that's the football field, and it, it so happens. I think the, if you were to scale off the plan that was put forward back in 2007, 2008, it might have been a little bit more than that, maybe 500 feet. But I think the important thing to note there is that land use maps by their very nature aren't as prescriptive as zoning maps, so if that line is 250 feet, 350 feet, we're not gonna force people to come back here and, and do a, a map amendment based on that. It's just a generally acknowledging that there is an area that is to be set aside for a future mixed commercial development on that property.
Can you give me a feel for, you know, stand in the wetland or back?
I'll, I'll... I'll show you what 500 feet looks like. Oh, you might, you might have changed. There you go. This, this is the 27th Street subarea plan. This was adopted back in, I think, 2007, and if you look in the area, and I'll, if you can highlight it here, hopefully my cursor is lining up like Andrew's was, that area in yellow represents essentially the, the properties in question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that off there now. See, that area in pink, that area in red that goes back towards our white line, that's about 500 feet. And that was really part of a depth to a future road that doesn't exist on our, on our official map, but it, it's probably, if, if you look at it in terms of the rest of the properties, it, it kind of would lay it, line up with that, that storage property that's on Drexel Avenue, the long, narrow storage property back there. So it's not excessively deep, but again, that number can, there is some room for interpretation as to the actual extent of the commercial on 27th Street.
If we incorporate this as it's written, future, any future development, unless the comprehensive plan is changed again, we necessarily have to account for some going along 27th Street rather than building.
That's, that's correct. And that's not, I mean, there's some context for that, or some very recent context for that. If you look at the multifamily development that's taking place in the city of Franklin a little bit to the north of here, they've got a, several hundred units of multifamily residential with a commercial piece out in front, daycare center, I believe it is.
Anything, any other discussion?
You kind of covered it, really. The biggest discussion kind of went, first of all, isn't the appropriate use designate that for residential use. Most people agreed it was. The question became that belt along 27th Street. The example we used, Doug pointed out, our neighbors to the west of us just did a large multifamily and they put commercial out in front of it. So it's there, not to say that it's, again, we'd have to change comprehensive plan if something better came along. We really gave ourselves flexibility in the future without having a crystal ball as to utilize that land to the highest potential. Other than that, that was really about it. I think I covered it all. Anything else, Chris?
That was pretty much it. They were just trying to zero in on 500 to 300 and trying to come up with, understanding that. And then as Doug got explained along the way, it was, it really was just part of the process and they're just trying to understand how it's going to impact. They were all pretty good with it.
Steve? Okay, if nothing else, motion please.
Bill move to approve ordinance 2947, adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 13 is the license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust members of the council have had an opportunity to review the common council report relating to the license committee. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Just want to point out fiscal impact that the license fees in the amount of $740 were collected, just thought I'd say that. Seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the August 20th, 2019 license committee report.
Dukenia, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 14 is our vendor summary report. If everybody would please take a look at it and you can direct your questions, if any, to the front table. I'll be there, I'll take care of that. There are no questions, comments, motion?
Bill move to approve, Bill move to approve the August 14th, 2019 vendor summary report in the amount of $996,206,000.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And just before we adjourn, just a reminder, farmers market continues on this weekend. All the vegetables are coming in, so please take some time there on Saturday morning. Get out there, see what they have to offer. Everything is done by a local vendor. And Mike, you want to put a plug in for Lions Fest? I don't think we'll meet before that.
Well, yeah. We have our setup starting next Monday. All volunteers are welcome. Bowling Friday is our kickoff. Got some awesome entertainment this year and hope to see you out there.
Yeah, hopefully the weather's nice and it's a good way to wrap up the end of the summer vacation season. So visit them down at the Legion Friday of Labor Day through Monday, correct?
Right.
So with that, motion for adjournment.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman and Dukenia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you all. Thanks, staff, appreciate it. Tim, as always, thank you.